Meeting in public at this time. Anybody wish to address the board major? Approves or section of the meeting, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of previous meeting on August 16th, board shall have copies. Is there any additions or deletions? Moved by trustee Baker. Who got, uh, trustee Huckle. Seconded by trustee Huckle. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those opposed, they should say in the eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, uh, you'll have copies of all the bills. Our senator, we have any additions or deletions?
We have one addition this evening. Verizon Wireless, it's eighty dollars and two cents as the monthly bill for the police department.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as amended tonight.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckle. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Uh, the first item I have in is a renewal application notice form from, um, Sultan S.K. Enterprise Incorporated. It's for the renewal of their, um, beverage license. And that came in certified. Just information. And I also, we received a letter from the village of Clayton to, uh, Gary Malinsky. The village board wishes to extend its gratitude for your thoughtful donation of chlorinated parts for our water department. On behalf of Ralph Downing Supervisor, Keith Alon, Marshall Green, and Eric Dingman Operators, your consideration is most appreciated. They'll put the parts to good use. Thank you again. That was from the clerk treasurer.
For your information, board, that's gas for you equipment which we no longer use.
And staff noon, I received a letter in from, um, Trehan. Uh, we have received a request from our tenants at the above property, which is 58 State Street, asking that something be done to solve a parking issue. There is a drop-off area at the State Street building entry area that tenants use for dropping off and pickups at the building. Also, as there are elderly people in the building, it is always nice to keep an open access for emergency use. There are other local rental units that are using the area as full-time parking, and we are requesting that the village install two-hour parking signs so that as no one can park there continuously and tie up that area and close. And there was, they had a list of, uh, tenants that they attached to that. And that was from Mark Trehan.
Tommy's gonna talk to them tonight, right? Person?
I believe, I was told that, yes.
Well, I don't have a problem with the signs, but I believe in order to do that, we have to pass a local law, uh, designated in that area as to our parking in order for them to make tickets if they park there.
Yeah, but nobody's gotta spend a bunch of money to do that.
I know.
Well, let's, let's try to go with Plan B and try to talk to this guy and see if he'll move.
Well, that's what they're supposed to do.
Instead of, well, change the law and pay the attorney and have a public hearing and it's a lot of money just for something we ought to be able to try to work out with the tenants.
All right.
Yep.
I agree here.
So you wanna just put that on hold and wait and see?
Yeah. Let's see how Tommy makes out.
Report of mayor and aboard of trustees. First thing on my agenda, discussion of cutting trees. We had the discussion last month. I checked with the attorney. The attorney says you wanna open up a can of worms, do it.
I think.
End of conversation.
Exactly.
All right.
And let those people know though?
I will.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you have a list of surplus equipment. That's just the start of it. Uh, I have nothing from water, and I have nothing from public works or electric, but I want a motion to surplus all equipment so that we don't have to wait and do. If we can find a buyer for transformers, we'll sell them that we got. We got other stuff that we, to get rid of. Uh, I, I just need a motion to, okay, to get rid of surplus equipment. Not gonna get rid of it today or tomorrow, but...
That include calks cars?
No. Can't do that?
You have to have a list in front of you.
I've got a list.
But I mean, you can't general, it sounds like you're gonna wanna generalize it.
Yeah, well, I wanna, I've been waiting for the other departments to come in with that list.
Just surplus what you have on the list for now.
Okay. Do you all have a list, board?
I didn't get one either.
Yeah, you all done?
Is that the list I generated, Carol?
Yeah. Right here. Ain't nothing on there, you bring it away.
Nothing ain't got, are we giving it away or we?
No, no, no.
So that can be sold, probably just...
Some of it is junk. You have to still surplus to get rid of it. Nothing there for you, probably.
No, no, just wanna see if we can, uh, surplus any of this stuff.
There's a lot of equipment from the store department, um, pH meters and things that are outdated, computers that are outdated, answering machines from the court. George, you got, you have the list.
Yeah. Wisconsin pump.
What sort of plant?
Composting duct fans, old blunder pump, computer equipment, hundred motor breaker starters, used vibrator.
Ooh. Oh, damn it.
Three-day tanks, two T3 garden rock pumps. It's been there for about three or four years now.
Do you need a more descriptive list, our senator, or is that okay?
That's fine.
No, I was just telling Carol, I says that, uh, it needs to be posted and...
Yeah. When we getting ready to get rid of it, we will. We'll post it, we'll advertise it.
You wanna advertise?
We'll have to, yeah.
I mean, that's fine, as long as they know.
Some kind of date, so, you know, help us get it rid of it from there.
Like a deadline for the sealed bits or whatever?
End of October.
October 30th then?
Okay, I'll put that form of motion. To surplus all the items listed on that.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be more because I'm gonna get this next couple of weeks and we'll get some more.
Okay, well, bring them to us.
Yeah.
We'll surplus them.
Two GE portables and police department low band. That's, uh, police frequencies, we can't use them. Sheriff's frequencies, we don't use them. And they're no good. One of them, they left a battery in a room, a radio.
There's no value in those radios?
Everybody's going, "Hi, Dan."
There's some, uh, light, are there no light, uh, emergency lights as well?
Yeah, there's...
That may be used, uh, somewhat somewhere else.
Exactly. If they're, uh, not energy efficient, they, best thing to do is to go right in the junk. Anyway, I have a motion to surpluses.
Second.
Jefferson and made the motion, Baker seconded it. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, we had a meeting with Melissa, and, uh, the next thing on my agenda is to, you approve, the approval to proceed with Veterans Park.
Move it. Second.
Moved by trustee Huckle, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Brian, did you look in your basket today?
Yes.
Yeah, I put that thing from Melissa. You got a general idea of what we gotta do.
Add it to the list.
Add, yeah, I know. Uh, discussion, construction coordinator, inspector in Veterans Park, and, uh, you know my recommendations is earth science engineering. We have to hire somebody, and it's better to have Dougie than to have somebody come from Bloodfall. And that is most, all that, I think, comes right out of the grant. All that payment.
You motion on there, or...
Pardon?
Don't even motion on that, you're doing it.
Yes.
Spend money. Okay, I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded, uh, moved by trustee Huckle, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And the last thing on my agenda is I received a Cmail to, well, everybody and her brother. But anyway, this is for general information. Fuller Communications Conduction with the Adarondak North Country Association, the ANCA, is pleased to invite you to participate in the curation of the Corridor Management Plan, CNP, that will define the future of the military trail seating byway. This plan, this planned byway currently runs from Ross's Point to Messina on U.S. 11 and 37, in addition to the Traddlespur west to Malone and Pot Stan and Canton. And there will be, uh, initial organization meeting will be here Monday, September 20th, at 9:30 in the morning till noon. That's all I know about it. So, you're all invited. And I believe that's it for me. Uh, trustee Jefferson?
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple items on my agenda tonight. Uh, the first item, I'll put this in form of a motion, is requesting permission for Mike Riley, Danny Gay, and Gary Malinsky to attend a one-day seminar in Hogansburg, New York on 10/21/2010.
I got 10/12.
That's wrong. 21st.
10/21 I got mine.
It is 21st.
And it's sponsored by the New York Rural Works Association, and, uh, NYSDOH will be awarding credit hours towards recertification for completing this class. So I'll put that form of a motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckle. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the second item on my agenda tonight, we all have in front of you, a Barton and Loujoudis, uh, it's a supplemental service, shared municipal project implementation, implementation of shared service report recommendations. Uh, I'll go through this quite briefly. Uh, we've been having meetings, Councilman Cooper was there, Mike Brandon eating last Wednesday, uh, trustee Baker was there. Uh, basically, what it gets down into shared services is there's approximately $100,000 left in the grant money. So, the engineers have gone through the village of Ross's Point, they've gone through the village of Champlain, and we're at a point now where we have to either go on with this and give approval for the engineers to write these agreements. And basically, it breaks down to, uh, there's four different items that they've listed. Uh, you can go through them and see basically what's gonna happen. The first one, that $8,400, they would, uh, write up this agreement and, uh, so we'd have a plan in place. Now, I don't necessarily agree that we need to go ahead with all four of them, but, uh, it's not gonna cost the village any money, and I would ask everybody on the board to take a few minutes and go through this. And we've got meters, and then the second one is the upgrade of the H2 water plant, and then we have the wastewater collection system, and then the fourth item is the water distribution. And the shared services, we've all agreed that it looks like it's gonna be the way for the future. If they do it in Champlain and we do it here, and we're doing the same service, it's a repetition of services and it costs us more money. So, we're at the point now where, like I said before, we have to decide what we wanna do if we wanna go ahead with shared services. Uh, when's the next meeting, Mike? I forgot to write that down in my paper.
We did schedule one because we're waiting for the outcome of the different board meetings.
Right.
And what you, what you wanna have them look at.
Look at $8,000, that's just Ross's Point's share of the village. This is gonna come out of that money that we have left over, uh, $8,400 for the village of Ross's Point, you know, you got the list up there?
I do, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna take that, that's not gonna cost the village anything, we're gonna take it out of that remaining grant money.
And that's basically what I had to report. I don't know if we can decide tonight. Like, Pumper has a copy, and I tried to get, the mayor has a copy, but I gave you guys copies also so you can see. All those two big books that they produced and the upgrades and stuff like that.
Who's paying for all this? Who's paying for this? It comes out of a grant.
We got, we had $100,000 left over.
No, no, but I'm talking about, they're talking about like preliminary cost estimates for improvements to the wastewater pump stations, Maple Street, $830,000.
It's all on there, I'm gonna need to forget it.
Well, that's, they're gonna write it up, but they're gonna, well, they're gonna write this up in form of a grant, so, the more people are on board with this, the more points you get towards a grant. That's what it's all about.
That'll cover those expenses?
It'll, it'll cover the expenses to do the preliminary engineering reports. They'll identify which lending agencies, if it's, if it's a loan, if it's a grant, and then at that point, you decide whether or not you wanna get in or not. But my feeling is that if the grant is going to pay for the preliminary engineering, you'll have that report done. If you don't use it, you put it on the shelf for 10 years, and in five, 10 years, if you need it, it's done. It doesn't cost you anything. If you don't do it, and then you wait, then you decide you need to do something. Now, you gotta pay for the preliminary report, where this here, it would be paid by this grant.
So this isn't a commitment to do, go forward with the project?
No, this is, this is to do the, the study, the initial preliminary engineering, and then they would identify the lending agencies or if it's a grant. Um, I hate to keep harping about meters, but this would be, this would probably fall under the degree initiative grant program, where they would probably fund meters, totally. So, there, there's some good programs here that I think you should look at, and we need to know so we can let the engineers know to move forward. Uh, the one, I don't wanna steal your thunder, Brian.
No, I'm all done with it.
The only reason I came is I saw shared services on the thing. But, uh, the item with, with the training for the planning and zoning boards, I, I think, uh, this is very important. We had money in, uh, or, uh, a dedicated account that we were gonna buy a crack ceiling machine with, but this is sort of fallen by the wayside, and we could use that money to do the training for all the planning and zoning boards for three years' worth of credits. So, that issue of training wouldn't come up for three more years for, for anybody, either village or the town. We have almost $8,000, and it's member item money from Senator Little, which we would use for that. Um, I believe their quote's around $8,800 or $8,900, but again, that's all negotiable, it was an initial quote that they, they gave us. So, I just came from the village of Champlain, and they wholeheartedly endorsed the training aspect of it. And, you know, I just wanna make sure that you're aware of that here, because it won't cost the village anything for, for three years' worth of training.
So this is really a spinoff from our meeting that we had at the town board or the town hall?
Well, this is the, the end result of the compiling of all the reports here.
But they figure the village spends $3,000 and the town spends $3,000. The training every year, this way or the training for the next three years will be free, 'cause we take it out of that shared services money.
Except...
Okay. Now, the other, the other aspect is what's left from the other grant to go forward with this survey that we wanna do to see if they, if it's feasible to apply for some kind of grant or loan.
Okay, so that's basically what I have to report. I don't expect you to consume all this tonight and decide on it, but I'm hoping by the next meeting that we would have you...
By tomorrow morning would be nice.
Yeah, we really don't have to know, 'cause you got, you got that meeting.
You wanna vote on the training then tonight?
Well, training, why don't we do both of them tonight? Because we need that information to go forward, 'cause Champlain's already said, "Okay."
We can move.
The thing with the meters is the, that grant is coming up sometime this month. They should be announcing it here a little week or so, so if we're gonna do a joint application, we need to, we need to go so we can, you know, move forward with that.
Just, the only thing that I wasn't sure, like Dennis, we all went to the meetings.
Yeah.
But we've been going to meetings right along, so we're a little bit upped up. And, and it looks like, you know, I mean, it's really not gonna cost us any money till we get, right after we get to preliminary...
Right. Exactly. Preliminary engineering report.
Engineering report is written. Then we'll have to figure the finances, and whether if we can afford it, fine. If we can't afford it, well, if we can't afford it, we can drop it like a...
I know, but the thing is, like you said, the survey, it'll be all done. If we can't do anything for a couple of years, and some money comes available through the state or something, where we could apply for a grant for the villages or the town, at least the survey will be done.
You're not coming to the project, you're adding to the engineering services and... That's really what we should do.
If you guys are comfortable with it tonight, then I'll put it in form of a motion.
Without a doubt.
Form of motion, move it on.
Okay, I'll put it in form of a motion that we allow the village to proceed with the, the village of Champlain and the town of Champlain to go forward with the, to spend the money for the engineering. And the second part of the, uh, would be allow Barton and Loujoudis to go ahead with the preliminary engineering report for the shared services.
Yeah, but you'll have to identify the projects there. You've got, you've got the, the meter project, you've got the water plant upgrade, and then you got the wastewater plant. Now, at the meeting we had the other night, they felt that the supply lines or the wastewater plants probably wouldn't score very high, but your water plant would. I mean, to, to me, to get the preliminary engineering report done on that, I think that was one of the big-ticket items in that report, you know, what, about $16,000 just to do that one?
The biggest one was the upgrade of the water plant.
Right.
It was $16,700.
Right. I mean, again, you would have the preliminary engineering report done. If you decide to move forward, at least that part of it is done. If not, well, you, you keep it for, you know, until you're ready.
The only thing is with this and that motion is, we'd have to have the mayor sign this to go ahead with this. Am I correct in that?
Well, the, the mayor, Jeff Moore, is the, they're the lead agency, so they're the ones that would be signing any agreements with, uh, Barton and Loujoudis. But we just need your, your input as well as the town, whether you wanna support different projects or not.
Uh, yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to support the upgrade of the water plant. And, you know, vote for the meters, we don't have to use the meters.
And the training.
And the training, that's, uh, other grant.
And the training expression, yeah.
We'd like to pass that, because I was gonna say the village $3,000 and the town and the, and the, and the village of Champlain also.
Brian, excuse me, would you mind just doing them separately so I, I don't get them confused?
Yes, that's just what I was gonna say. Okay, let me amend my, my motion, man, and make it easier for Carol. The first motion would be...
You know, we're gonna have a quick meeting.
Would allow the village to proceed with the village and the town for the training aspect. So I'll put that in form of a motion.
Move it. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckle. Any discussion?
Should we put plumbing training?
Well, I'll put that, yeah, we'll put that in. It's only the plumbing.
Everything's included in that, right, you mean?
There'll be discussion. If not, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, the second item, there's four different preliminary engineering reports. Not interested in four, only interested in one. You're only interested in one? That's right.
We gotta go with the meters, 'cause that's only goes 15 points on that thing. See, that's the GEI.
Dave wanted to go with the water plant, no?
Oh, you got, you gotta go with them. You gotta go with them.
Go with both of them.
Is that gonna cost you anything?
I'm gonna go for, they're going for the whole shot.
We're only going for the study. So we're not going for implementation of water meters.
No, it's a study.
It's all gonna come out of the, the grant money, so...
Okay, so it's meters, upgrade of the H, the water plant, wastewater collection, and the fourth one, I didn't really think was that, you know, water distribution. They say we don't have enough water pressure in case of, uh, major fires.
That's a place on the fire pole too, right?
I wasn't sure on that one, so...
At least you got a lake of water out there for a fire.
Well, I like to get to it. That's why we put them dry hydrants down on State Street.
So, it, it'll be up to the board, Dan. Uh, you wanna go on all three of them, or all four of them, or three out of the four?
Four out of four. Go all four, and we'll have a cover. But don't pan out, well, and just, don't pan out.
I agree with both. I assume the money's there to be used.
Absolutely.
Okay, it's not gonna cost us any money, so I'll put that in form of a motion, allow the village to go ahead on all four of the preliminary engineering reports.
I second that. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion, board? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That's it?
That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Uh, trustee Baker? Uh, the only thing I have on my thing is, uh, storm drains, we gotta get a thing going. I'm just saying that we shouldn't go any, do any more big jobs like electrical and all that crap this, this year. You only got two months, and the ground's gonna be froze. So let's clean up State Street and all the other little jobs we got. Buggle jobs are big jobs. Well, you've got enough on the list. You don't have to worry. Brian's got plenty on it. Oh, yeah, he does. You gotta do all those hard plates, all those... State Street's just gotta be graded, right? You just gotta grade State Street. You gotta, you gotta pile of blacktop to do, my God. Well, you're gonna do that on the first of October.
Well, if you're gonna start that project down here on the 3rd of October, you're not gonna do blacktop on the 1st of October. Somebody needs to look at a calendar here.
Yeah, you know, we're gonna run out of time here, and we'll mess all over the place. You come in at a, at a, no, let's see, no, I got a 10 o'clock meeting in Placquer tomorrow, and I got two 15 doctors appointment, Thursday. When you and I sit down and go through these jobs, we'll prioritize them. They may have to work in the rain. And get things, and I'd like to get these drains, storm drains cleaned too, before everything goes to hell or we get the heavy fall rains. And all the one we got left is that 24-inch. That's what I'm gonna clean up. I mean, to clean all those storm drains, stuff, so we don't get in a mess like we got into before here. We get to stay to clean theirs.
I think if they were cleaner and dirty, they still were flooded, though, as much water as we got, uh...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You can take the drains on Lake Street, right? The grates, and Brian could test it. The one on White Avenue, right on the first road off, the first time the water starts to run, all of the brick covers, and the, the drain's not useful.
So the state...
These are state drains, and they know about it.
We got our own to worry about, too.
Yeah, but that would affect us, though, if we did, really had a bad rain, or backup everything.
Run up the street?
We need to clean our own though. Name been done since Charlie, Ryan left, right, Ryan? That's 35 years ago.
45.
Anything else, Bob? Well, that's it for me.
All right. Trustee Roberts?
Yes, the first thing on my agenda, I would like, uh, to request that Mary Rascal, Patriceen, Arthur Tremblay, and Jerry Farrows attend a collections care workshop in Essex on, um, September 17th.
Okay. Well, I have objections to that, board, and I think the treasurer does too. Well, they are not, this is not a function of the village, it's a function of the historical society.
Okay, well, it, it was to be in preparation for the care of the new...
I understand that, but there's still, there's a volunteer.
If it's not allowed, then it's not allowed.
I'm just, I'm stating my opinion.
Well, it's not allowed, there.
I'm not sure, is that allowed?
Well, it's up to the board, but number one, it's not a budgeted item. Number two is the village requesting them to go to this workshop.
Okay.
And number three, the statement's been made that the village isn't paid for, the store decided they're gonna pay for it anyway, so... Well, enough said then.
Enough said.
Yeah. Draw that everywhere.
We can't pay for it.
Yeah, we can't pay for it, that's it. Well, I'm not saying you can't pay for it, but I'm just saying that, that you, you know, is the village requiring them to do this? The answer's no. We can't require them to do it.
Um, the next thing I would like to talk about is the 4th of July, uh, for 2011. Um, 4th of July committee just had a meeting, I don't know, a week ago, two weeks ago, to plan for our 2011 celebration. Um, we looked around the table, we had the same half a dozen people there. Bottom line is, people on that committee are burnt, and we need to get new volunteers, so we are making a plea out to the village residents or community. You don't have to be from the village, you just wanna help out the village. Um, we are having an organizational meeting on September 28th at 6:00 PM at the fire station. All residents are encouraged to attend, participate. Bottom line is, if we don't get any new, new members that show up to our meeting, we're pretty much gonna say, "That's it, we're not doing 4th of July next year," because half a dozen people cannot organize it the proper way. Um, each year's dwindling and dwindling and dwindling, and it's at the point where we need more people to jump on board, or else it's gonna fall. And that's kinda where we're at right now, so, um, if we don't have any new people step on board to help with the planning of that, uh, that festival, then, uh, we're probably gonna do it either a one-day event, or we're not gonna do any of that at all.
Council, putting that in the paper? We get an issue?
Yeah, it's already been requested to place that, add in the paper. That's just the way we are, that's just the way it is, and it, it's the same thing with every organization, we realize that, but, um, times come for people need to step up and say, "Hey, I'll help out," in some way, shape or form. That's that.
Thank you.
Then I have, I have one more request. I'd like to request an executive session to discuss codes, please.
I'll second. Moved by trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Jefferson.
Moved by trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call, vote, trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Huckle? The mayor votes aye. And that's it?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Huckle?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to piggyback on trustee Roberts', uh, discussion of the Fourth of July celebration. It, it disturbed me greatly when I read the memo we got the other day. But I agree that the same people can't continue, it's a big, big job and without some new blood, it's just not gonna be possible for it to happen, so. All of us have put in our ears on it, you know, uh, if, if I can talk the person that I've already talked to into co-chairing with me and if we can get five new volunteers to work with the committee to be ready to take over, um, I would suggest to go with the celebration. If, those are ifs, so we gotta have, we can't, we just can't do it the way there's, there's anywhere to us. But I would, if we do that, I would suggest to go back to, uh, starting on, on Friday evening.
Well, we'll, we'll definitely discuss that on the twenty-eighth and we'll see how many people are at our roundtable.
I, I, you know, whatever experience I've got, a couple of other people will do that, that have been kind of laid back a little bit for another year and we'll see what happens. I hate to see you go by.
And we all hate to see you go.
It's, it's, it's what Ross's Point does.
Why don't you stop it? You might not ever get it going again.
You're exactly right, Brian.
Or you take a year off and people realize what they're missing.
But, yeah, but then getting it started again.
Then try to get it back.
Yeah, that's the problem, you're absolutely right.
Right, well, anyway, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Huckle. Carol?
I have nothing.
Or Sam?
I just want to let the board know that I was invited to a meeting up in the town last Thursday, um, to discuss youth programs. It was, um, the town of Champlain youth commissioner, Linda Fredette, uh, Jan Leternal, our youth commissioner, Jane West, the secretary up there and Juanita, um, from the village of Champlain. Um, everybody's budgets are tight and the town's looking for ways to share in some of the expenses they have with the youth programs. Obviously, none of us there can make a decision, I mean, it's a board decision, each board has to make the decision, so I don't know if anything's even come of it or not, but, uh, for informational purposes, um, I found out that the village of Ross's Point and the village of Champlain are not contributing to the basketball and soccer programs. However, I did point out that, uh, we do contribute to the hockey and, um, skating program here, which the town doesn't do. Um, I also pointed out that I thought that we should not be funding the skating, or the ski club program, the town, through the town because, uh, they're not, they're not supporting the hockey or skating clubs. And to me, that's the same as, all three of those organizations are the same, they're all, they're all user fee related, uh, activities. I don't know if the board has any suggestions or anything, um, I don't know, like I said, if anything's gonna come about it, you know, like, we spoke. You know, the town's, uh, mentioned that they spent four thousand dollars towards the civic center, but I also said that it's not for youth programs, it's to help take the maintenance of this building. I mean, we did put on bomb for a hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars last year and the village residents are not the only ones that use this facility. Um, we also, you know, talked about, um, other expenses that the, uh, informally regarding, um, code enforcement and, uh, it was brought up about the, um, or a country golf course, they haven't paid their twelve thousand dollar bill to the town yet, which was due back in May. I don't know what the reason is for that. Seems to me if you send a bill out, uh, money needs to be paid, if it's not paid, there should be interest charged, and I let it ride like that and then I, and the way is any different than any other taxpayer. But, uh, just to keep the board informed what's going on.
Any questions? Can we discuss this further?
Like I said, I don't know if anything else, if anything's gonna come of it or not, uh, I know the town right now is in the process of doing a budget, but I don't think a decision like this could be made in a short period of time.
Could you put together a, uh, a, a list of the costs of each individual program that we would, we're being asked to contribute toward? And where are we gonna find the money?
Well, the only, the only additional, uh, what was coming out of it was the only additional, they would like to have us have each municipality fund a cer, a separate sport, which would be, um, like for us, they want us to fund, um, basketball, which would be an additional eighteen hundred dollars on top of.
What?
Eighteen hundred dollars, what we're paying, on top of what we're paying already. And then the, uh, uh, I forget if it was the town or the village, it was gonna pick up soccer. And so, it would cut down on the town expenses, but it also too depends on the youth commissioners, whether they want to run those programs now, so, you know, it depends on the board too, you know? And they also got two letters from, they got a letter from the, uh, the, uh, swimming instructors. They'd like to have a pay increase, right now they're just making a minimum wage. And these people that participate in the, um, swimming program, they have to go out and get certified and stuff, so I, I can understand why, why they're looking for more money. I mean, they have to have the certification in order to, to do the teaching versus coaching soccer or something like that. And the bus driver for the swim program is also asking for an increase, so I don't know who makes those decisions, if that's gonna happen or not, I don't know. Um, but that was two other things that were brought up at this meeting.
Again, I'll ask you, can you put that on paper and some possible resources that we can find? If, if indeed we might be interested, I don't think we're ready to make a decision on anything like that.
No, no, and I'm not asking you to make a decision, I'm just keeping you informed, I don't think, you know. To me, the boards have to get together to make some kind of decision about something like this.
Yeah.
Or really on zones or something, and, uh. Because it's, you know.
That it? Or Sam?
Us, the ones that were at this meeting can't make the decision, they don't have that authority, so. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Brian?
And, uh, George, did you get a chance to talk to the rest of the board about the cable crossing on Pine and Maple?
No, I had to stop and think for a minute what you were talking about. You want to explain it or do you want me to?
Yeah, I'll explain it. Uh, cable TV has, um, they actually rent the conduits from us now, the conduits that we put in the ground. But in earlier years, they used to have direct burial, where they just put the cable in the ground directly and bury over it. Well, they've been having problems with it and the crossing that crosses Maple Street on Pine is gone bad. And they're trying to directional bore underneath the street, but there's so many pipes and water lines and sewer lines. If you're asking for a request for us to dig them in a conduit across Maple Street.
They need to rent a cutting mill again.
What's that?
Three foot in the mill?
Well, they, you know, they do rent the conduits, yeah.
They don't rank off for that.
I know, but. I, I just, I wasn't gonna make the decision, I think it should be a board decision.
Oh, you're right.
Boy, I agree with you there, Brian.
How much is it, Brian, approximately, to do that? For us, it's mostly man hours and blacktop, you know, we do blacktop after. I noticed the village, the way we have it chopped up, there's quite a bit of blacktop in this fall to do.
She darn right, you got a pile of, oh. You got probably three weeks of it.
Oh, yeah.
You don't want to wait too long because the pores would be closing too. He knows when they're closing. He's already got the date. When is the date?
Usually Thanksgiving.
That's too cold, that's too damn cold, delaying blacktop.
Depends on the weather, yeah. But, uh, I don't know if you want to give me permission to do that open cut for cable TV? It's a few people.
Jeez, you got nothing on your plate right now, don't you?
Yeah, yeah. Yes. Yeah, we've got a lot of lock panels.
Is there any other, is there any other direction they can come from without cutting Maple Street?
I hate to see them cut Elm, but just blacktop that out.
Yeah, exactly, there, yeah.
We don't want to do that. Lot of heart attack there.
Yeah.
You need both.
It's a few people.
Are we thinking on it? We have to let you know tonight?
No. We can, uh, table it till the next meeting, but I know Hal came seeing me again today and I said, well, we have a board meeting tonight and I know, I think, I think Mr. Mayor's gonna bring it up tonight and we'll talk about it, but.
I'd like to throw right back in Time Warner's lap of all the goddamn hard time they've given us on everything. And you know what I'm talking about, we waited years for them to protect their cables off poles, right? And we, and nobody to talk to and nobody wanted to call us back, right? But boy, when they want something, then Johnny on a dollar.
Always think about it, let me know in the.
Now, let's put our foot on the brake a little bit and think on it for another week.
Yeah, okay. Uh, just an update on that transformer, the one that we had rebuilt two years ago, it should be energized tomorrow. We've been doing a week of testing, uh, we've been pretty busy up in the substation with, uh, H M T, it's a private company that comes in and, uh, puts this transformer in, in that new circuit switcher in service. So, tomorrow, our big transformer should be energized and we're planning to put load on it next Monday.
Joe Kurt, just send us a bell, too, as quick as you can.
We're working on it. Uh, if you notice today, you'll see some digging at the corner of the intersection of Academy and Maple. I'm sure, I know the mayor heard about it from a couple, uh, taxpayers, why are you digging up the street the day before, uh, school starts, but it's a project to relieve some of that water flow that flooded out Beechwood and Pine View. And if you want to solve the problems of Beechwood and Pine View, we need to disrupt a little bit of traffic once in a while. But we wanted to get out of the school zone and get out in the lawn, now we can connect our pipe and continue on and we'll be in good shape.
That it, Brian?
That's it. Do you have any questions for me?
No, but I got a comment for you. We pass on to your guys, last week, as hot as it was, they did a hell of a job on that sewer line up there. And it's in, done, and the residents are very happy, which surprised me. And, uh, but this continuation that you're doing, it should relieve that problem entirely. So, just passing on.
I will.
A big thank you. Yes, sir.
The other thing I forgot to point out too was Jan had pointed out also too, too, unfortunately for the town, for, for the village of Champlain and the town of Champlain, they have no fields for any of these activities, solid fields are being used at Ross's Point, so we bear the cost of maintaining that stuff also.
We're doing our part, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Anything else? If, uh, I'll, most, uh, opening meeting up the public, anybody who wishes to address the board, they do so. There being no money, I'll close it and have a motion for a little recess.
Motion for recess.
Seconded. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Three votes, you're all set.
Five minutes.
It's just on a presentation.
No, that's mine, I don't want that.